Is everybody ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
All right, we'll get it started here. I call this meeting.
Larry, they should be able to hear you, but I don't know if you'll be able to hear them.
With that, we, I determined that, I determined that we have a quorum available, and with that, we will do a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Knowles, do you not start us since your pledge?
I'll give it a shot. Please call me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That goes so much better than it does on Zoom. Thank you, Ray. All right. With that, if we would review the previous minutes, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion for the minutes to be approved. All those say aye. Any opposed? All right. Next, we have reports from officers and staff at this point in time. Mr. Knowles, you would like to make a comment from last meeting?
Yes, to the, to the board and to the city engineer who was at the meeting as well. At that meeting, we reviewed the subdivision that's going on on Ovoca Road, and there were some questions about a couple of lots that were being added, that were being divided. One lot changed into two with the driveway where it was located. I opposed that at that meeting, if you will recall, because it was coming out into a curve. I actually went back and walked out onto that property where those two lots are to take a look at that driveway, and that driveway could not be in a more appropriate place than where they're being located. So I apologize to Mr. St. John to my comments about that decision to make them there. I thought that was appropriate to let you know and the board know that I did go back and review that site, and it is appropriate. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Ray. All right, anybody else, any other reports or anything from staff? Okay. On our agenda, we have no old business, so let's start with a new business. First up is a public hearing on Womack slash Turkey Creek Minor, Turkey Creek 2 Minor Subdivision. This looks like it would be a splitting of one into two. I guess, does the staff have anything that they would?
Sure. This is actually, some years ago, this was one property that was divided into two. Right now, they're asking to divide it into three. And so I think it was a father and son split the property, and now the son is looking to make his lot a little bit bigger and divide the remaining into two.
Okay.
And it is in our urban growth boundary.
Okay. With that, it's a public hearing, so I will open the floor for the public hearing. Once again, if you will state your name, and you have two minutes. So, public hearing's open. Anybody like to speak on this one? All right, with that, I'm going to close it. I know, are you representing, is Andy right there? Okay, that's what I thought. So, if, I will entertain a motion, and then we can maybe get some more direction if we do. We do have Andy Bass on the phone to help us out. He's the one who did the plat.
You ready for a motion?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'm second.
All right, we have the motion. So, the motion is a move to approve the plat being subdivided down from two to three. All right, any comments, questions? Andy, do you have any, Andy, do you have anything to add? Okay, good. All right, if there's nothing to discuss, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the plat subdivision, final plat, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's move to the next one. Next one is the Deets?
Deets.
Deets?
Yes.
Deets New Manchester Highway Minor Subdivision Plat. Once again, I think this is creating just an acre off of a larger plat. Does the staff have anything that they would like to address on that?
That's correct. So, this is creating a one-acre residential tract from a 55-acre parent tract. And the comment that I would have is, at the time I put this together, I did not have a revised plat back from the surveyor. So what I would ask is that you make your approval subject to incorporating all of staff's comments onto the final plat. And that's just a procedural thing. It could be, since I haven't prepared these packets in the past, I don't know this to be absolutely true, but I believe in the past, we have not regularly brought you anything that wasn't already in its final form. So, another option could be, you could postpone it, and I could bring it back at another time, but since we had already advertised the public hearing, I wanted to give the public an opportunity to speak to it if they were here tonight. So those would be your options. I think my preference would be, you could approve it, subject to incorporation of all staff comments, or we could postpone it and wait until we have the final plat.
Okay. So, this is actually a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. State your name, your address, and you have two minutes, so it's open. Anybody like to speak to this? All right, you want to go ahead and close it? All right, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve, subject to incorporation of staff comments.
Second. Second. All right, we have a motion. It is open. Anybody have any comments or questions?
I'm trying to figure out where that, where in this 58, 55 acres, where's the?
It's actually immediately along New Manchester Highway.
Yeah, that side.
It's just past the sign company that own the ride, after the cut-off to the existing apartment.
Got it, got it.
Was a nursery at one time, it was a large group of trees just on a big vacant field that they grew. So it is.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right then, I'll call the question. All those in favor of passing the motion, subject to staff comments, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to the next. All right, we have Pinnacle Point Major Subdivision Primary, Preliminary Plat, excuse me. It's going to create, it looks like, 22 residential lots on 9.43 acres on Ovoca Road. Staff comments?
Well, I know the developer is here in the audience, so if you have any questions for Mr. Allen Howard, he's here. He's proposed a subdivision that would create 22 residential lots for single-family dwellings, and these lots, they generally are about a third of an acre, and low-density residential is being proposed. We did have all of staff's comments incorporated into this preliminary plat. There's a common area, was one of the comments, I remember, where that stream buffered area is. That's been shown as a common area for the homeowners association to own.
All right. With that, this is a public hearing. State your name, you have two minutes, and your address. I'll open that for anybody in the public that would like to speak on this. All right, go ahead and close that, and I'll entertain a motion to open discussion.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, we'll take a second. Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. We had a race there. So, we've opened it up. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, in this 22-unit, or 20-unit subdivision, is there any housing that is going to be targeted for moderate to lower?
Oh, so close. Oh, Larry, you went on mute.
After the word "moderate."
We heard you.
I'm sorry.
The type of housing.
Is there anybody, any plan for, or designation by the developer that some of this housing is going to be created for moderate to lower-income families?
Can you come to the microphone?
No, I need to get my mic off.
So, the developer indicated he is looking at market rates. He hasn't specifically designated any for low income.
Okay, I'm just wondering, because we've done a lot of developments lately, and most of them are targeted towards high-dollar homes for upper-income, middle-upper-income families, and we don't seem to be developing anything for moderate to lower-income families, which are the starting employees in a lot of companies, so.
I don't know.
I think that's something that, in the future, maybe not with this, but in the future, we need to be considering this. Not wanting to dictate how much money a developer can make on his subdivision, but still allowing us for some growth, because that's been a big contention here, is we want to, we want to offer housing for families that are coming in, that are new, and starting engineers and starting things like that are not going to make enough money for a quarter of a million-dollar home. And we're not thinking about that. That's my only point.
I will add that with this preliminary plat, we haven't seen construction plans yet, so I can't speak to the size of the homes or any of that. I don't know if Allen, if you want to share that with us.
I will share this, you know.
Will you come to the microphone? Sorry. They won't be able to hear you at home.
I will share this with you. My personal thoughts is, that man is correct, right there, that is speaking. My personal, my plans are to mainly stay with the same price range homes that are being built in Emeraldus. However, the need is there if the city is willing to accept a lesser home. And they can be, no matter what size home you develop, the price, the development cost of the lot is pretty much the same. I mean, you, it doesn't matter, so, but he's correct. I just want to say that he is right.
Well, and I guess we could share that in meeting with you at the staff level, we did encourage Mr. Howard to look at a planned unit development that would have allowed more density and maybe some attached and detached units.
I wanted to do planned unit development, however, with the requirements that this, you know, when the city gets down to the point that they want to sort of tell me what I'm going to build, I didn't like that part of it. And I felt like I was being told whether I needed to put in playground equipment, or whether I, what I needed to put in, as far as whether it could be vinyl, or brick, or hardy board, or even down to the color. That's the way I personally felt, and that's when I pulled out of the planned unit development. And so, this is much simpler way for me to go with it.
And I certainly wouldn't want to tell someone what they couldn't or could not build in the subdivision. I'm just saying, we as a city need to think about this, because we've got this issue. And I keep hearing, we need to build housing, we need to build housing, but are we building the right kind of housing, is the question in my mind right now.
I agree.
But certainly, I have no problem with the subdivision that you're wanting to build.
Mr. Howard, before you sit down, one more question. It would, it would be my expectation that you would be building the same level of homes that you have there in Emeraldus.
Yes.
And as far as the marketability of those homes, it seems that those homes are selling as fast as you can build them.
Right now, but if you'll recall, I'll go back several years of history here, when I didn't, I didn't have the plans drawn, or go through it with the city, but back in 2000, probably four, five, in that neighborhood, Mr. Dugdale had that whole area out there, and it was all drawn up, and there was a big fight that held up Mr. Dugdale from building for several years, for a few years, and I'm not sure whether it's lost or not. But it ended up, I traded for that land, because Mr. Dugdale had just given up, and it had been passed, once the city had passed it, I traded him some land for that land. And I didn't change anything in the drawings at all, and went through, and it's, and then 2008 hit, and 2008, I had to decide whether I was going to finish that project or not, and I did finish it, knowing that it wasn't going to sell. And those high lots have, that have sat there a long time. Yes, they're selling now. They sure are. But I really think that you can sell 10 times, not 10 times, but 5 times, I mean, lots, had we have had the development here in Delahoma that we've had elsewhere. But there has been a, it's hard to go through, it's been hard to go through, to deal with the planning and codes and this department over the last few years, and that's the reason it's the, you don't have enough lots now to meet the need. I guess you didn't want me to come up here, and I had to get all this off my chest. But it's been a long process getting to this point of 12 years later, that yes, lots are selling crazy. And I, you know, I've sold, been selling lots for the same price I sold in 2008, so, there you go.
Well, if I might, let me say this directly to you, for this purpose of this board. Five years ago, planning that came forward this board, I made a mo, I voted against that subdivision at that time, for this reason. I wanted to get that intersection at Riley Creek Road and Ovoca Road fixed, before we put the traffic that was the burden that was going to be put on that, that intersection right there. I think we now have the plans in place to fix that intersection, and I want to go on record as supporting that development there. I'd like for you to hear that personally from me.
Thank you. And I, and I'm willing, I own that corner, and I'm willing to work with the city on a plan up there also, to, to give you some room, whatever you might need there.
It's important that we fix that intersection.
Thank you, Mr. Knowles.
All right. Any other questions, discussions?
I mean, I'll go on to say that I share the same thing that Mr. Krapter has, that I've interfaced with a lot of young engineers, a lot of younger professionals at work, that are saying that they can't find any housing, either here or in Manchester, that's like in that, in that range. Like, it's either just nothing, rundown, or, or.
What's the range that they're looking in?
I think like 150 to 250, like.
I'm going to guess that, that this, these are probably going to be around the 200 mark, just guessing.
The comment.
You can give me 150 mark, if that's where you want them.
Yeah.
I mean, if that's the house you want, you can get them there. But at the same time, we've got another neighbor, a neighbor that there that you've got to please those folks, too.
Yeah.
Understand.
You don't put in less for houses around everybody else, that's, that's better.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's some newer folks that moved in near me at work there, and they, and I hear their, engaging conversations with them about that they're looking for places, and they don't have any places to look for, because it's either 400,000-plus or, or 50,000.
I know Jeff, you're also, you had your hand up. You're also a contractor in town. Did you want to add something to that?
I can tell you part of what that is, and it's not just on the city level, but I will tell you, it costs more to build in the city of Delahoma than it does in the quarter round, because of the regulations that the city has on it. And many times, the frustration is, there seems to be no understanding of trickle-down economics. As the regulations are put on us as developers and builders to just keep adding, keep adding, it goes to the consumer. At the end of it, we have to pass it on, or we don't stay in business. And now, a starter home that I was building in 2006 and selling for 90,000, now costs 169. And it's not just the city level, it's also a state level, lobbyists getting things passed that just keep changing the codes and changing the codes. There was an electrical code that took effect a year and a half ago, that added a dollar and a half per square foot across the board.
Is that art flash?
It just keeps adding and adding and adding, and then people look at us and go, y'all are just trying to get rich. It's like, no, we're working harder today to make a profit, and still need the regulations that are put on us, federal, state, and local level. But when, and I encourage this board, as you look at your subdivision regs, the things that seem great, because you see them in a big city, as you add that to your subdivision regs, like infrastructure of sidewalks and common areas and all that, your homeowner eventually has to pay for that. The developer can eat it, because there's not that kind of profit in it. The contractor can eat it, because there's not that kind of profit. So as all these things are passed to make the city better, it is affecting, he's right. But the trouble is, it's almost impossible to buy the land inside the city of Delahoma, meet all the standards and regulations that we have to meet, and turn around and sell it to where it's profitable to build a starter home. And they end up with so much in their lot, that it drives the cost of the house up.
Thank you, Jeff.
Understood, thank you.
Do you have one more comment?
Yes, sir.
You know, I know that there's some changes going on here at the post-partent now, but I want, I just want to give you an example of something, of things that I have seen. One thing in particular, I won't go through them all, but when most codes people, codes office, we go in to see, as a developer, we can walk in without appointments, okay? We go by, we go in and say, can I see the codes guy? And he brings us back, and I'm sure homeowners and everyone else can too, I mean, I separate myself. But I, I have seen that happen, have to get an appointment, and maybe not take my phone calls, definitely not return my phone calls, and it hurts my feelings, and it irritates me. And I get turned, that really turns me off, not, people not returning their phone calls. But even worse than that, we have had, it's hard to get builders, I've had a couple builders that will not come down here with me investing money and build homes. They won't, they don't want to deal with the codes department. But I have seen, I have seen them be inspected on a job, maybe whatever inspect, some phase of inspection process, and just ask the guy to go next door and look at something before he leaves, saving the trip back out there, speeds everything out, takes three days, he won't go next door, takes three days. They're not on that kind of a timeframe, I don't think. There's been no flexibility in the codes department, none whatsoever. I mean, it's by the book. And it seems, just seems to me like that he's, that the builders have been, and Jeff might have been one of them, I don't know, but it just seems to me like they have been really hard on the builders and their timeframes, and trying to help them. I would think codes department should be trying to help them, instead of working against them in timeframe laws, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. All right, with that, does the commission have anything else to discuss? If not, I'm going to call the question. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, now we have another public hearing. Settlers Trace Phase Two, Major Subdivision Plat. Looks like they're finishing out the subdivision there at Settlers Trace. Any staff comments?
They are finishing out a new phase of Settlers Trace. It may not be the last phase, there may be another one after this. This will extend where there's now a sub-street at Settlers Trace, and build nine new homes, all single-family. This is also the same low-density residential. And just the one item of note was, this went before, the Board of Mayor and Aldermen for an extension of their vested rights, and they did get a three-year extension, approved by the board.
All right.
And the developer is in the audience, Mr. Jeff Bowen.
All right. All right, with that, I will open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak, state your name, your address, and you have two minutes. Anybody like to? All right, we'll close that public hearing. All right, and I'd entertain a motion.
Motion's approved.
Second.
All right, we have it there on the floor. Any questions? Mr. Bowen's here. Anybody have any questions on this? All right. If not, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of the subdivision being passed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now we have a zoning map amendment. This is also a public hearing. Would you like to speak to this?
Sure. Again, I, this is an item that I don't think was ready for the agenda tonight, so my recommendation is to postpone it, but because it was advertised as a public hearing for today, I left it on the agenda. I haven't personally had any contact with the applicant, Frank Thrumberry. I'm very familiar with the piece of property. This is very close to a new park that the city is developing. It's a large tract, and I think that's why it may be of some interest. It's currently R2 medium-density zoning, which allows for single-family and two-family homes. The applicant's requesting to build townhomes, so that would require rezoning to an R3 high-density residential. R3 would allow for not only townhomes, but also apartment development, and potentially with a, you know, a piece of property this size, it could be a lot of new units of housing developed.
Okay. So, like she said, we don't have everything, you know, correct for the developer.
We don't. As you saw, there's a concept plan that I was able to put into the packet, but I think we need to get with this applicant and get some additional information before it's ready.
One second. Are you an, the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing, and then we'll have anybody else that wants to speak, and then we'll have you come up, okay? All right, it's public hearing. State your name, your address, and two minutes. If you want to go ahead and do that right there, that'd be fine. All right, I'll open it up.
My name is Frank Thrumberry, and I'm applying to change the zoning, 1800 East Lincoln Street to R3. You guys have any questions?
I get, okay, so let me do one other thing real quick. I'm going to close out the public hearing.
Okay.
All right. Can I entertain a motion, and we'll start asking questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to postpone until we have the rest of the information.
All right, we'll, we'll make that, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, but we're going to open up the discussion, so then we can hear.
And so, if I can add a little more clarification, I'm sorry. So we had a change in our staff, and I've only, just in this last week, taken over the duties or the interim duties of the planning director. One of the things that needed to happen in order for this to be heard tonight and have proper notice is, we need to post a sign on the property, letting the, you know, other property owners in the area know that it was up for rezoning, and that hasn't occurred.
Okay.
So that's really the primary reason I meant to state that, so.
Okay.
Don't we also have to send out letters to the people who are adjacent to that property?
We do. In our zoning ordinance, it says that when there are more than 20 property owners within 100 feet of the property, that we do not have to mail certified letters. And so, just in the little bit of quickly reviewing this that I did, it does appear that there are more than 20 property owners, so that may be the reason it wasn't, it wasn't done.
Okay. All right.
Got it.
So the proper, to let you know, proper, proper notification to the public was not done due to a staff change, and we apologize. So we, that's why we're going to postpone it. Do you have any other comments that you would like to make or ask or say? And once again, we apologize for that.
I would like to say something. So will, will you guys have that done, the next one?
Yeah, absolutely, it's, it's only five days' notice required, so we could easily have it done for the next meeting.
Okay. That's all we got.
All right, thank you, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
All right, so, um, we've got a motion to postpone this to the next meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, next meeting will be July 20th. Any other new business? With that, we're adjourned.